Great. We have Chair on your agenda here, so until then, one of our council members like to leave the land acknowledgement and call to order?
I would be happy to do that. Well, I'll go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected, the Confederate villages of the Shahn. Acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. Thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
And I'll call the role. Committee Member Jordan.
Here.
Committee Member Mickey.
Here.
So I figured between the two of us, one of us should run the meeting and nominate you.
Sure. With that, so we've called to order, so we'll move on to item two, Standing Committee Administration. Two dash one, selection of committee chair.
I think we just did that by acclamation.
I see, so you have nominated me for chair?
Yes.
I have no idea how this works if you need, can we just say that I'm chair or I actually need it?
Yeah, in a party with two people.
I second that.
That's right. Vote, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess with that, I'll move on then to item two dash two, approval action minutes.
I move approval of the action minutes.
Do we need a second, even when we're two people?
Some public comment opportunity?
That would be appropriate, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we should have, didn't think about that, okay. Don't have all my notes in front of me, sorry, we should back up onto two, one, then selection of committee chair. Is there any public comment on selection of committee chair?
I don't see any hand, and is there, no.
Sorry, so with that, we'll move on to two, two again. Councilmember Jordan moved for approval of the action minutes.
Just, Member Jordan?
Yes.
And Member Mickey?
Yes.
So that passes.
Item three, public comments. For persons desiring to address the city council standing committee on an item that is not on the agenda, please note that each speaker is limited to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the committee's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda, therefore such items may be referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. Is there any public comment?
No.
Not seeing any public comment, we'll move on to item four dash one, quarterly investment performance.
Chair and member of the committee, chair and members of the committee.
Vice chair, what did you say?
Chair and self-appointed vice chair of the committee. I would just like to introduce Justin Moswell from PFAM, who will be making the presentations today, both on the investment report and on the second item we have on potential modifications to the investment policy, and unless there are any questions of me, I'm going to turn it directly over to Justin.
Great, good evening, everyone. Member Jordan, Member Mickey, thank you for your time this evening. We'll be going through the quarterly investment performance review for the period ending December 31st, 2024. If you want to make it. All right, we're now full screen, so hopefully everyone can see the presentation on the screen. If you turn to the third slide titled Current Market Themes, we like to provide a high-level overview for the quarter that was, one more slide, please, thank you. We like to provide an overview for the quarter that was. Certainly, there have been a lot of developments ever since the election, there have been a lot of fiscal policy pronouncements from Washington DC, and a lot of that is shaping the instability that we're starting to see in the economy. That said, we feel at this point in time, the economy still appears to be on track for a soft landing. While that hasn't yet been achieved, we feel that recessionary risks still remain quite low. That said, as I mentioned a moment ago, there is a lot of uncertainty, and that really evolves from two main things, tariffs and the sort of Doge priorities that the White House has put forth. So we see, you know, with respect to tariffs, April 2nd is really the date we have circled on our calendar with respect to reciprocal tariffs and whether or not those will come to pass. And secondly, Doge, you know, they're really grabbing headlines with respect to adjustments to federal jobs. In the last jobs report, we saw about 10,000 jobs adjusted at the federal level, that's in relation to about 2 million perhaps that we see, so, you know, we'll continue to monitor that very closely. That said, consumer confidence, the Michigan Report, the beige book, all of those still remain generally positive. So our expectation is that despite all of this sort of positivity, prices in fact will likely rise with the fiscal policies that we're seeing out of the White House. The labor market, that said, is still pretty solid, with wage growth outpacing inflation. With respect to what happened in the quarter, you know, you'll see here, you know, it's a bit dated now, but, you know, the Fed did cut rates, certainly that's, that's kind of bounced around a bit this quarter with a lot of volatility, but with respect to purchases we've been able to make on the city's behalf for its investment portfolio, you know, credits spreads remain at their historical tights, and that really reflects the strength of the US economy. So we'll continue to utilize the new issue market as we look to generate incremental revenue for the city's corpus. The next slide speaks to the dual mandate of the Fed. As a reminder, just to back up, so we're looking at inflation on the left side and on the unemployment rate on the right side, the Fed has a mandate to maintain maximum goods price affordability and also maximum employment. So here you see inflation, the lens by which we're looking at that on the left side here. The Fed has a 2% target, that's the dashed green line, and things have moved sideways, you know, think back to, you know, 2021, 2022, when there were long lines at Costco. Now we're starting to see egg prices, you know, you know, up about 18%, I want to say, in the month of January. Similarly, on the right side, you see unemployment, right, we enjoyed about 28 months of unemployment below 4%, and now that's beginning to inch up a bit. So more recent data, you know, we see the Consumer Price Index, that in fact increased to about 3% in January. We saw core personal consumption expenditures data for January coming in generally in line with expectations, and that's the key measure for the Fed, that was at 2.6%, while non-core, including food and energy, was about 2.5%. So still elevated, still not at that 2% level, but then as we look at jobs, you know, we saw, you know, really outsized growth in December. We saw a jobs report that showed 256,000 new jobs added in December relative to 100,000 that were initially expected. In January, however, things dipped a bit, so we saw about 143,000 jobs relative to 175 expected, and most recently, in February, we saw 151,000 jobs added versus 160,000 expected. The unemployment rate is now at about 4.1%. So, you know, in general, I think our observation, the key takeaway here is unemployment, labor, that seems okay. The real elephant in the room really is surrounding inflation and prices. So the next slide speaks much more to that and our sort of high-level thoughts on, you know, the sort of things that have evolved since November, you know. Every presidential administration has their priorities, and that really shows during inaugural addresses, during the first hundred days of each administration, but, you know, as we saw with the first Trump administration, and now we're seeing again with the second Trump administration, there is a certain level of volatility, there is a certain level of, you know, close attention that is paid to this president and a lot of the pronouncements from their office. So I'm going to take these out of order here on the left side, the things we think about, taxes, you know, in general, lower taxes should spur economics sort of, how do you call it, growth in the economy if folks are paying less in taxes, but that said, as we saw a couple of weeks ago when Congress put forth their proposals for how these tax cuts could be achieved, we saw dramatic increases to the US deficit, and that could be potentially adverse for the US economy. The second piece we see here, immigration, you know, border security, it's not really clear as to what a deportation program or the scale of that might look like, but in our mind, the real concern would be changes to the labor mix, you know, if folks aren't going to be able, if employers aren't able to find, private employers aren't able to find lower cost workers to fill certain jobs, you know, it's going to be more expensive for businesses to, to run their business. Regulation, you know, we expect some sort of deregulation among financial services industries and among energy, but, you know, we'll have to see how all that shapes out, especially when it comes to M&amp;A activity, which we initially did expect to pick up, that we haven't really seen much activity there yet. The elephant in the room, I'm saving for last, is tariffs, right, it's, holy cow, it's, you know, it's what, you know, I don't know who's waking up on what side of the bed, but, you know, first there were 10% tariffs to Chinese goods, then 25% tariffs to neighboring goods from Canada and Mexico, then they're on, then they're off, you know, and, you know, we'll continue to monitor this, monitor this very closely. There have been additional sort of teasings of additional tariffs on aluminum and steel imports, as well as goods from the European Union, but, you know, I think a lot of it, initially, we viewed it as posturing, but I think at this point in time, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, the real date on the calendar is April 2nd, and we'll see how all this shakes out. The right side, we try to point to, you know, how folks have kind of, you know, how all this has kind of transpired in actual data, and on the upper right, you can see how folks have brought forth their purchases, not only in November relative to the August and August to October timelines you see here, but in fact, more recent data are showing the same, that a lot of folks are bringing up their purchases in January and February relative to the tariffs that have now been talked about. And then with respect to S&amp;P 500 companies, you know, many of these have been mentioning the potential effects of tariffs. Some companies have discussed how prices might be increased, how that may affect sales of their goods, and similarly, how supplier and operational effects might be seen if tariffs in fact are enacted. The next slide is my crystal ball slide, and, you know, it's, there's a pretty wide range of where inflation is expected to go toward year end. That said, it looks like at this point in time, the Consumer Price Index is essentially expected to remain level. That said, there have been more recent sort of pronouncements, more recent data that have shown, for example, consumer spending down a bit in January, revisions to the Atlanta Fed GDP Now forecast for where GDP might go as the quarter progresses. That data frankly is a preliminary, right, it's all based on January data, and there are still two months left in the quarter, but the, you know, with respect to inflation, at this point in time, most economists think things should be generally level, and then with respect to GDP, going forward, you can see on the right side, you know, forecasts actually are still pretty good, you know, despite sort of noise about recessionary, or recession coming back into play again, fourth quarter GDP actually came in at about 2.4%, and that's preliminary and revised numbers from the Bureau of Economic Analysis. Similarly, you can see out to fourth quarter of '25, things are still positive. So I know it sounds odd, I'm trying to be very positive here, things seem okay for now, and again, we'll continue to pay very close attention to all of this and how things shake out. The next slide speaks to summary of economic projections that's put out by the Fed. Each quarter, they show these data, these are the things that their, their folks are thinking about, there are 19 voting members, and this is kind of the aggregate summary of all their projections. The one or two areas I'll point out, there are, again, similarly as we talked about last slide, GDP looks all right. Unemployment, as I mentioned, that seems okay. Inflation, so you'll notice 2025, the second set of bars on the left, those now show half a point increase from 2% to 2.5%. Some participants in the Fed decided to take potential effects of tariffs into their forecasts, some did not. We don't know how, we don't know who, we don't know how many. The Fed is really kind of, you know, mysterious about all of this, but, you know, the projections are what they are, and inflation is expected to grow, at least in 2025. The other key thing I'd point out here is the Fed funds rate. If you rewind to one year ago, the long-run sort of normal level for the Fed target rate was 2.5. On the far right side of this page, you see it's now 3%, it was 2.9 last quarter, and then again, a year ago is 2.5, so half a whole point higher. So just something to think about as the city thinks about its sort of ongoing capital needs, about, you know, where it wants to park its money, perhaps as constituents think about how they park their liquidity. So, you know, we think this data are, these data are very important as we think about where rates might move. So speaking to that, again, on the, on the next slide, you'll see the Fed dot plot. So this is, these are the votes of the various members, both non-voting and voting. Key takeaways here, you know, back at the end of 2024, four members in December said rates shouldn't be cut, and you can see that with the four dots on the far upper-left side of the chart. So I think that's very interesting, but in general, the sort of mantra for hire for longer is very clearly seen here. In September, the number of cuts expected for 2025 was four, now we're down to two. Market is generally at about 1, 1.3 now. Initial expectations have been bouncing around, you know, in, in January, it was maybe September. As of this week, most market folks are thinking maybe May. That said, we'll have to see, I think, how a lot of the inflation data shake out, and a lot of how the, a lot of the economic reads that come out over the next few weeks. And again, one thing we were reiterating here, the long-term rate, the normal rate, now 3%, that's up half a point from last year. So how did things shake out for yields? The next slide shows the one-year range in the shaded area, and September in the dashed line, and December in the solid line. So as rates rose, as, as one would expect, bond values in the city's portfolio did fall. So you'll see that in the performance. That said, the good things to take away here are there was general normalization, the yield curve. So the dashed line is showing inversion at about the two-plus-year range, now we're seeing inversion closer to the three-month range. Similarly, you're seeing the three-month yields fall from, to about 4.31, as of before our meeting, it's now 4.28. So we expect and we hope that the yield curve will continue to normalize. In fact, we've seen now that the two-year and five-year rates are now below 4%. So, you know, we'll continue to monitor this closely and strategically position the city's portfolio accordingly. I guess I should pause here before I dig into specific sort of investment classes and spreads. I know that was a lot of economic data, but I should, I thought I should just pause it to see if anyone had questions.
I appreciate your objective presentation, given so many subjective things going on. Thank you.
No questions at this time.
Okay, absolutely.
We usually hold public comments till the end of the complete presentation.
I just want to comment that thankfully it reminded me why I majored in economics in college.
For those at home who could not hear, just to thank, the member of the public was thankful that they majored in economics or studied economics in college.
All right, so the next slide speaks to specific sector yield spreads for assets that we purchase on the city's behalf. Here you can see the one-year trend, you know, and in general, I guess I should back up, these spreads are relative to US Treasuries. So in the upper left, you see agency paper, you see corporate notes on the upper right, mortgage-backed securities in the lower left, and asset-backed securities on the lower right. So these are the spreads relative to US Treasuries, and you can see in general, there's a tightening, right, there's a downward slope to most of these asset classes over the year, and as I mentioned earlier, this really speaks to the strength of the US economy, one would think. Why should I take risk in purchasing these sorts of asset classes in my investment portfolio if the US economy is already doing quite well and generating, you know, pretty solid yields and paying on their debt? Now, that said, we still have to, you know, try to look for value for the city, and the way we do that is, you know, during the quarter. So the next slide speaks to what we saw during the quarter, and you can see that, you know, these are the specific spreads on a quarterly basis for the period ending December, with one year in the dashed line, the one-year average on a dashed line, and, you know, there are many purchases that we did in fact make for the portfolio, namely within corporate bonds along with treasuries. So the upper right sort of speaks to that, you can see that during the quarter, spreads were generally pretty close to treasuries relative to agencies, which in the upper left are, you know, frankly somewhat negative to treasuries, and asset-backed securities, which have tightened quite a bit even further from their one-year average, we still saw quite a bit of value in corporate notes. Similarly, we did purchase a Freddie Mac commercial mortgage-backed security, and that's indicated by the sort of lighter blue line on the lower-left chart, and those spreads continue to remain attractive in our view, in that these sorts of mortgage-backed securities pay interest income on a monthly basis, which can be helpful for the city's interest income. With respect to how fixed-income assets return during the year, the next slide shows, shows that information as well as fourth quarter returns. So, you know, as I mentioned earlier, total returns for the fourth quarter, you know, as rates rose, market values went down, so again, it should be no surprise that many asset classes in fixed income did not perform that well in the fourth quarter, but as you look to the one year, you know, as rates fell dramatically, fell a lot, in the third quarter, market values rose appreciably, and you can see that those are still sustained in the one-year returns here on this page, with over 3% for treasuries and nearly over 5% for most other asset classes, including asset-backed securities held in the portfolio. I'll speak to specific returns for the city's portfolio later on in this presentation. Additionally, in the deck, for the, for the community and the committee, there are some written sort of sector commentaries on the next slide, actually the next three slides, and one thing I guess I'll impress on the, this sector outlook slide, which is this one here, you'll see that because many of the assets we purchase for the city are pretty tight relative to spreads, you know, it's getting pretty tough to find value, right? So we have a strong preference for treasuries at this point. In fact, we also purchased some commercial paper for the city this quarter. So, you know, those sorts of more liquid, nearly risk-free asset classes are, are in our sort of bias at this point in time, but we will continue to look out for nice relative value purchasing opportunities as we go forward. The next slide speaks to things we're looking out for over the next 12 months, you know.
Let me just ask a question there. So if I understand correctly, the corporate paper, the yield is, it's tightening in terms of its difference, or it's decreasing in terms of its difference with treasury? Is that the case? So that the interest that we're getting off of corporate paper is getting closer and closer to treasury?
Exactly.
And so I think I read in the narrative that that was a signal that there was value to be had there? That part I don't understand, seems like if, if the interest rates on corporate paper get closer to treasury, then why wouldn't you just buy treasury because they're lowest risk of all as compared to corporate? So I think that was maybe the narrative on the previous slide, maybe? Previous to that? Maybe after that, and there's, there's some slides that had writing on them, prose on them.
Right, I think it might be this sector outlook slide, so two more ahead. Forward, forward. Two more? Yep, here's this one here. So I guess that, I guess in the, as I look to the written narrative here, it says here, we're looking to tactically reduce allocations in corporates to make room for future opportunities. Is that what you're meaning?
Okay.
So what, I think what this means is...
Reduce, okay, I'm sorry, I obviously read that backwards.
Oh, no.
Thank you, yeah, okay, I appreciate it, understand it now.
So, yeah, treasury generally dry powder, we can quickly pivot that into other asset classes.
Thank you.
Yep. So these factors to consider, again, shouldn't be a surprise, monetary policy, it looks like the Fed has paused its sort of rate-cutting cycle, and inflation, you know, that, a lot of that is really dependent on how tariffs shake out, and we'll continue to monitor both of those very closely. So I'll now turn my commentary to the city's portfolio specifically, if you could advance two more slides. We'll speak to the account summary, and you can see here, the managed account balance stands at 29 million. About 6 million was moved into an established liquidity account during the third quarter of last year, and those balances now stand at about 7.5 million as of February. The city continued to benefit from the inverted yield curve with the Camp Pool seven-day yield at 4.65%. That's down from 5.08 last quarter, as we saw overnight yields begin to fall. The next slide speaks to the portfolio, the investment portfolio specifically, you'll see that the balances now stand at about 29.3 million, that's down about 40,000 from the prior quarter, and again, that is in relation to rates rising and market values in the portfolio declining. A portfolio effective duration was actually 102% of the benchmark. I'll point out my own mistake here, you'll see the benchmark effective duration of 1.74 on this slide is actually incorrect, that should be 2.04. So in relation to the volatility that we're seeing in the market, one thing we've done strategically to ensure that portfolios are, are performing as close as they can to the benchmark is by positioning duration as close to benchmark as possible. So if the portfolio's duration is 210 and the benchmark is at 204 as of December 31st, you are currently at about 102%, which is pretty much on target with the benchmark. Yield at cost was 4.79, that's down from last quarter, and that essentially represents your earnings rate looking forward, including the yield of, of the portfolio looking out to coupons and maturities of bond, of investments. Yield at market was 4.55, that's up from 4.13 last quarter, and that's the earnings on the portfolio if it was... That's up from 4.13 last quarter, and that's the earnings on the portfolio if it was sold entirely at the end of the quarter. The credit quality of the portfolio improved. It's now 70% rated AA and higher. That's up from 63% in the last quarter of September. And I'll speak to sector allocations and durations here in a moment. The next slide speaks to issuer diversification. So one key strategy for the city's corpus is to diversify the sort of names, the sort of credits that are held within the investment portfolio. The key takeaway here is that there are numerous names that account on actually the following two pages, so this and the next. And this spreads the single issuer concentration risk and helps to mitigate any sort of industry risks among the names that are held in the portfolio. If you could advance to the next slide, and one more. So here you can see sector allocations. This provides a bit more detail relative to the summary slide. allocations to treasuries, those grew, those are now 26.5%. That's up from 16.8, pardon me, I'm misreading my notes here. So it was 26.5% in December, and that's up from, or that's about similar to last year when it was 28.7%. Agency commercial mortgage-backed securities, that is now 23.6%, and that's up from a year ago when it was 16.8%. Another area I'd want to point out here, asset-backed securities are nearly 17% relative to 13% a year ago. Corporates are now 22.5% versus 18%. And we've nearly doubled or halved, pardon me, negotiable CDs, which are now 4.6%, down from 8.5% a year ago. Portfolio activity is seen on the next slide, and this shows how the corpus was invested over the past 12 months. Sales and maturities are shown in the gray bars, whereas purchases are shown in the blue bars. Much of the detail surrounding these transactions are on the detail pages that follow the illustrations. Here you can see about 5.37 million in purchases, and that includes corporate notes from names that are all very familiar, Accenture, Toyota Credit, and State Street. We had a commercial paper purchase of Bank of America, as well as treasuries and a Freddie Mac security. And then in aggregate, there were sales of approximately 3.3 million with coupons as low as zero. So now you'll see on the final slide that I'll speak to with respect to this deck, the portfolio performance. So this account was opened with PFM Asset Management in September 2023. So we have periodic returns for three months and one year. Over the past quarter, $268,000 in interest was earned. There was nearly $300,000 change in market value, and total dollars were returned of negative $29,866. The portfolio that was returned was 10 basis points, but that outperforms the benchmark by 27 basis points. The benchmark lost 37 basis points. For the full-year period, 1.2 million in interest was earned by the city. There was a positive change in market value of about $400,000, and the city earned total dollars in excess of $1.5 million. And that generated portfolio return of 4.65, outperforming the benchmark by 83 basis points during the year. So that wraps up my remarks with respect to the economy, the markets, and the portfolio, and I'll open up for questions.
Just curious, the pros mentioned that this is, well, I don't know, is the benchmark LEAF or what is the benchmark there?
So the benchmark was previously LEAF. It is now zero, the ICE B of A, zero-to-five-year U.S. Treasury Index.
Okay. And in the narrative, it said that this outperformed, I guess LEAF, I'm using terminology, a local agency investment fund, which is a pooled fund at the state level for people attending. And so could you say some words about why it outperformed LEAF? I mean, I think it's probably structural in terms of what LEAF is limited to invest in versus what?
Yeah, LEAF is essentially a sort of, you know, cash liquidity sort of pool for a lot of municipalities, so it's invested pretty short. I want to say maybe the duration might be around 200, 220 days, something like that. I don't know all the facts off the top of my head. Whereas this strategy is, has a duration of, you know, call it about 200 or two years plus. So, you know, the sorts of investable assets that you have now include the entirety of what is afforded by state code and what the city has in its investment policy. So, you know, I think that there's more diversification. That said, there is a bit more volatility because of the extended duration.
Yeah. And in terms of the allocation to the different categories, just regarding me sitting here now, I don't think I've seen or read, maybe it has been given to me and I haven't read it, something like a prospectus that says, you know, what is the maximum-minimum allocation, say in asset-backed securities or corporate paper? Are there, is there a bandwidth like that for these, or do you sort of have maximum flexibility from the city to go 100% corporate or 0% corporate?
So there are limits that are prescribed by the city's investment policy, and that's in line with state code. So we follow those, you know, in accordance with the policy.
Go back and read the investment policy again, been a couple of years. Thank you.
Of course.
I don't have any questions, so we can go to public comments or questions.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Lucia. I am a member of Bay Area Divest, and I'm also a Albany resident. I've read through the options that the city council is proposing, and I would like to urge you to please...
Sorry, I'm going to apologize. You're actually, I believe, calling in on 5-1, which will be the next item that we have, which is discussion of the environmental, social, and governance investing strategies. Right now, we're on item 4-1, which is just a quarterly report out on how investments have gone for the city.
So in other words, if you can hold your comment until after the next presentation, which will be on ESG investment policy.
Any comments in the room? Not seeing any comments in the room. I'll bring you back for any discussion.
No, thank you. I appreciate the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, again, thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely, thank you.
With that, we'll close item 4-1, because there's no action needed, right? So we'll move on to item 5-1, discussion of environmental, social, and governance investing strategies and options.
Oh, I will continue. Thank you again. I'm pleased and delighted, frankly, to speak with you all about ESG. You know, I'm a Bay Area native, I went to school just down the street at Solisian. So I'm delighted, frankly, that a community like this is so engaged to want to discuss these sorts of opportunities in its portfolio. So we prepared a deck that goes over this sort of sustainable investing options that PFM Asset Management offers to the governments and local agencies that we serve, not just here in California, but nationally. So, you know, I hope this raises thoughts, you know, encourages discussion, you know, and certainly, you know, I invite your questions, maybe we can hold those to the end. I know that there's a lot to dig through here. So if you can turn to the next slide, you know, the city requested that we review options for screening related to specifically oil and gas and aerospace and defense. This slide number two shows a summary table of how we might approach that in the city's portfolio. At a very high level, these areas can be avoided through either industry or sub-industry exclusions, exclusions based on revenue derived from specific sources, broader environmental, social, and governance screenings, as well as a more focused environmental risk screening. And one thing that I should also note here, these metrics are provided by a third-party data provider we partner with named Sustainalytics, which is a Morningstar subsidiary. The next slide focuses on more specific ways that we can address each of the industries that the city has expressed interest in. Specifically, this slide number three speaks to oil and gas. The bullets on this page correspond to the columns on the prior page. For industry exclusions, the relevant industries and sub-industries for oil and gas companies are outlined in the top chart. So those include energy services, oil and gas producers, refiners, and pipelines. And each of those has a sub-industry, including, as you see, oil and gas drilling, equipment, coal, integrated oil and gas, and the like. So there's a certain sort of, you know, deep analysis that the city could dive into if it chose to, for example, exclude specific industries and/or sub-industries.
If I could just ask a question there. Through my day job, professional work as a researcher, I've actually dealt with the NAICS codes, which is National, I can't remember what the A stands for, but Industry Classification System. Are these based on the NAICS classification, do you know?
I'm not sure, but that's something I can follow up on.
Okay, thanks.
So in addition to specific industry and sub-industry classifications, other ways that we could target identifying oil and gas involvement among certain holdings in the portfolio are business activity, and that's derived by percentage of revenue derived, specifically we're calling out direct involvement, or percentage ownership by a company with involvement, so indirect involvement. And then at a sort of broader scale, there's an environmental, social, governmental risk rating that can measure the sorts of related oil and gas factors, including carbon emissions, land use, water use, and the like. And then, as I mentioned, also, there's another sort of additional focus that can be placed specifically on environmental risk ratings related to oil and gas. The next slide similarly speaks to aerospace and defense. Here you can see the table on the top shows industries and sub-industries, which are frankly the same, they're both aerospace and defense. But with respect to business activity involvement, you can see that revenue derived or involvement could be categorized by all these sorts of individual business activities that are listed on this page, mines, chemical weapons, cluster weapons, and the like. Similarly, on a broader scale, the environmental, social, governmental risk ratings are seen here, and those measurements related to aerospace and defense that we identified could include bribery and corruption, business ethics, carbon, and then the remaining sort of bolts here on this slide. And then similarly, there can be an additional lens that focuses on environmental risk ratings to further, you know, those sorts of priorities if the city so desired. Now, one thing that we were also asked to do was assess how this might potentially affect holdings in the city's portfolio. And we like to speak to that on the next few slides here. So this first slide speaks to our approved buy list of names within our sort of corporate holdings. So US Bancorp Asset Management has an approved buy list of, you know, call it about 300-plus names. And these names are approved for holding in many of our client portfolios, and obviously a lot of that would also be, you know, sort of honed in on based on investment policy of an entity like the city. One thing that we wanted to do here was highlight potential impact if the city chose to exclude aerospace and defense, energy services, as well as oil and gas. And on this slide, you can see that indicated by the yellow, the dark blue, and the blue bars on the left, and the dots on the right. So one thing I'll point out here is you can see the names are generally pretty minimal. You know, with respect to our total approved list, you know, aerospace, defense, oil and gas, and then, you know, the very small sliver of energy services that, you know, again, it's that dark blue slide, this is alphabetized, account for, you know, call it around less than 10% of our total purchase approved list. If the city chose to specifically consider an ESG, environmental, social, governmental risk rating as part of its investment strategy, what we wanted to show on the right side of the page was, you know, a sort of scatter plot for what names would be eliminated potentially from the portfolio. So the horizontal axis shows the ESG risk rating, and the light gray box that's titled 78% of issuers, that includes specifically ESG risk ratings with a score that is under 30%. So that would be considered medium or better with related to Sustainalytics' ESG risk rating. So, you know, anything outside that is categorized as high or severe ESG risk is in the sort of whiter shaded area on this scatter plot. So what I would emphasize here is I think that if the city were to either pursue, you know, industry, sub-industry classifications or direct business involvement, you know, relative to the left side, I think the sort of purchase list still remains pretty ample. But similarly, if the city chose to pursue an ESG risk score or risk rating sort of metric, 78% of the approved buy list would still be available to the city. The next slide speaks to specific returns for fixed-income assets with and without ESG considered. So here you can see annualized return and quarters outperformed for a one-to-five-year strategy that has an ESG risk scoring involved. And you can see that in the blue bars relative to a non-ESG corporate index indicated by the gold bars. And you can see fairly minimal impact to annualized return, about one basis point less, in fact, if non-ESG portfolios or non-ESG strategies are pursued, whereas outperformance also is 14 out of 20 quarters versus 6 out of 20 quarters for ESG strategies. The next slide speaks to direct costs and potential opportunity costs for the portfolio. Generally, when we implement these sorts of strategies for the public agencies we serve, there's an additional fee of about one to two basis points based on total assets under management, depending on the complexity of the criteria that you all choose to pursue. I'll point out the small footnote we include. For a sample portfolio of about $30 million, one basis point is approximately $3,000 per year. There are no additional custody or trading costs related to this sort of strategy. With respect to diversification, as I pointed out two slides ago, that is reduced. So that is one thing to keep in mind. And then with respect to yield and investment impact, you know, there's no real specifics we can provide. While I was able to show you past performance, that certainly isn't an indication as to how the portfolio may perform in the future. So, you know, I encourage you to, you know, pour through this document and think through it more diligently and raise any questions that we can answer. So that wraps up essentially my prepared slides. There is an appendix that shows some of the sample reporting that we provide. So when I visit with clients who have these strategies, in addition to the sort of normal deck that I just went through in item four, one thing that I'll additionally go through on a quarterly basis are these sort of sample slides, and we can quickly flip through those if you like. So that includes an ESG risk overview on the next slide, that includes a sort of risk rating as well as, oh, one back one? Yep, there we go. So you'll see the sort of risk rating on the bottom sort of bar chart. You'll see how many of the individual issuers are covered by Sustainalytics and the portfolio. And then the next slide shows how diverse the portfolio is relative to portfolio rating and ESG risk rating. And then lastly, just some additional sort of sector analysis on the next slide, as well as ESG risk rating relative to fundamental credit rating, which is on the following slide. And then additional sort of detail pages with respect to ESG risk ratings for all of the holdings in the portfolio. So that wraps up my prepared remarks. I know that there are lots of questions, so I'm very much looking forward to a productive conversation.
Thank you for another presentation. On the example, first page of the example portfolio report, it had, I think, 51%, no rating available. Is that essentially the treasuries in that portfolio, or are there actually that many of the private sector papers that don't have? of the private sector papers that don't have, or of the 300, the 300 allowed private sector, which I think the 300, I presume is just the private sector, not treasuries, not, things like that?
Yeah, so, yeah, exactly. You hit it on the head the first time. So the not rated is generally the treasury holdings, agency holdings, you know, related sort of GSE or governmental sort of secured entities.
Okay. And then the environment score, so I looked up Sustainalytics, and it was great because it actually provides scores, you can look up any company. So I looked up all the companies, or at least all the ones I could, that were listed in the portfolio currently. I didn't look up the environmental score, and it was probably in the footnotes, but is the environmental score the environmental score portion of the ESG score, or is it some other, some other metric? So there was that graph where you had ESG risk on the x-axis and environmental score on the y-axis. And so what was the environmental score?
So the, from what I recall, there is a sort of maximum threshold that can be set with respect to the environmental score.
I guess maybe to back up, is the environmental score, is that a Morningstar product as well?
Yes.
Is that, is the environmental score the environmental score component of the ESG risk score?
So...
Is it the E of the ESG, or is it some other, like, whole other analysis?
As I understand it, it is part of the E in ESG, but the city could, for example, make that more strict.
Sure, right, okay. So we have latitude in both of those, and there's some loose relationship, as you can see from the trend between them. We've gotten some public comments, and I thank the public with some feedback on Sustainalytics and some changes it apparently has made. So I just did a quick search, it looks like there's other, there's other vendors. I certainly use Morningstar myself in the distant past, so appreciate the work that it does, but there was another vendor that actually had greater market share, but it wasn't clear to me, looking at the website, if they like produce a similar product to Morningstar. To your knowledge, are there other, are there other vendors besides Sustainalytics that do similar ratings?
Yeah, so there is another major vendor called MSCI who does offer those sorts of, you know, ESG-type screenings. As I recall, there was an email that was, or a note that was sent about concerns surrounding Sustainalytics and, you know, certain sort of concerns surrounding human rights abuses and that sort of thing. But, you know, to be transparent, from what I understand, MSCI has also faced this sort of concern. You know, the sort of conflicts that are happening globally, you know, they're very difficult to sort of measure, right? So I think that both, at least from what we understand from our peer, from our partners at Sustainalytics, you know, they've tried hard to kind of evolve their thinking surrounding that. And it seems like MSCI, you know, one of their competitors, is potentially exploring how to explore, how to evolve that as well.
Yeah, and so when I look up the scores, I didn't capture the latest update date on all of them, but some of the ones I looked at were October, and the information that was provided in these notes was that there'd been a change in the analysis around what you just described in December. And so I'm kind of wondering, I guess that's not baked into the scores that they currently have, because the ones that were most recently scored in October, they may change dramatically with this change in analysis approach, or they might not change at all, depending upon whether there's exposure to that particular element that changed.
I mean, I've seen, with respect to Sustainalytics, and I can't speak to MSCI, as I go through quarterly meetings with clients and I see changes in the ESG risk rating for individual companies, those do change sometimes dramatically, you know, from quarter to quarter. And I think that, you know, as I understand it, Sustainalytics does review each of its individually ESG-rated, risk-rated companies on an annual basis. As for the timing, I'm not sure, you know, how that looks, but it is fairly periodic that all of the names that are surveilled by Sustainalytics are revisited.
Yeah, I guess my question was more, they made a structure, they've announced a structural change in their analytical approach, so I certainly appreciate that any given company, its risk rating can change because it's changing its management, it's changing its product line, whatever. But this is more, this is a structural change in the analysis methodology as a whole, and so that could cause a structural change in the scores. So you might have a lot of companies that previously were assessed as having exposure in, say, human rights areas that Morningstar decided they are not going to take on trying to validate, and so all those company scores, risks could come down as a structural result of that. And I just don't know when we're going to see that or not, be able to see that or not. So it kind of goes to, you know, we're in a flux moment. Anyway, thanks.
Question about slide five. So that's potential impacts on issuers of purchase. And so you described industry distribution, and you said that the orange, dark blue, and light blue colors were less than 10% of potential companies that could be invested in. And then on the ESG risk environmental score, you said that if we were to go with that medium or better, that's 70, when you say 78% of issuers, does that mean that 22% of the potential purchases would not be available to us? I see. So we're talking about less than 10% reduction in businesses invested versus in one methodology, in the other methodology, it's reducing it by 22%.
Right, yeah, because the ESG risk rating is a sort of, you know, more broader category. You'll see all the other non-colored dots would be captured by that ESG risk rating.
Thank you. And then Councilmember Jordan already covered the question I had, which was, and actually went even further and found another company that does ratings, so that was the other question, was are there other companies that do ratings, given the changes that Morningstar has implemented? And then, so going back, let's see to slide seven, you say one to two basis points, so reading the footnote, so that means $3,000 to $6,000 approximately per year. Am I, I was trying to understand what percentage increase that is based on what we're currently paying. And so I was trying to understand if the rest of the footnote on the bottom, sounds like maybe we're paying 10 points on the first 25, and then eight points on the remaining, approximately $5 million in investments. And so we're adding one or two basis points on top of those basis points, is what, is that, is that what all of that is trying to say? I'm trying to understand, compared to what we pay now, I'm trying to understand, what is a $3,000 to $6,000 increase?
Right, no, yeah, no, that's a great question, and I apologize, I don't have the blended rate calculation in front of me. But, you know, let's say it'll be greater than eight basis points. In that event, it would be an additional one to two basis points above that. So between 10 or nine and what would be 12 basis points all in is what you all might anticipate.
Okay. That was it for questions on my part, so not seeing any...
So the 78% is not some, say, paper available, or total investment available, it's number of entities that would be available to invest in, is that what the 78% means? Okay.
Yep.
And that 78% is based on, looks like a 30-cut, a score of 30 on the ESG risk and a score of eight on the environmental score. So we presumably could pick whatever window we want in there, that's the one you used for illustration.
Different question as well?
Oh, so, given the entities, say we just went with the ESG risk score, and if we had a hard threshold, and as you discussed, a company could go, you know, above, be below that threshold, and so it's purchased, it's in the portfolio, and then go above that threshold in the next quarter, what does the PFM asset management do in that situation? Because, I mean, there obviously can be risk to, like, turning around and churning and selling, because like things are bouncing up and down around the threshold, so how do you, how do you manage that churn risk?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I mean, one thing that we similarly sort of deploy among credit ratings, fundamental credit ratings, is, you know, these sorts of requirements are employed at time of purchase for the portfolio. In the event that there's a sort of, I'm going to say violation, right, in this sort of requirements, with respect to a credit rating, or in this case, potentially ESG risk rating, you know, some entities desire a report, you know? But I think that the one thing to keep in mind is there are many factors to consider in, for example, just selling the holding, right? For example, potential loss if it's sold before maturity, you know, or gain, additionally, you know, how long it might take to mature. So if the holding, for example, matures within one year, maybe it might be time to consider selling a little early, but if it's longer than a year, you know, you all are pretty, the holding might be pretty far from par, and there might be a more substantial loss in that case. So those are just things to consider, but generally what we see is a sort of either notification, and, you know, then staff or, you know, the committee could then decide, all right, at the next meeting, we should revisit this sort of holding and decide what should be done about it.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Not seeing any questions from council, we'll open up for a public comment.
Hi, Peter Bernhardt, Albany resident. Before I start, I wanted to thank staff and city manager for the great work they've done on this, and the city manager in particular for being so responsive to emails. It's a real pleasure to work with you, you're very good at getting back to me, because I've been a burrow pest on this particular issue. So I want to understand, and I have public comments that I've done, I won't read from them directly, but you, on slide, early slides on your second presentation, you talked about excluding industry groups, so sub-industry groups around aerospace and defense, energy, oil and gas. That should not require any ESG filtering, it's just you're going to say, I'm going to exclude these by virtue of their membership in a particular industry group. So we don't need to add any additional filters onto that. So everything in that scatter chart you showed on slide five would not be subject, right? And I would also comment that the reason that there's so many companies falling within the acceptable range is because they're not assessing human rights. And that's an important consideration for me, and I think a lot of members of the community. And I know you don't work for Sustainalytics, I mean, it's a product that your company uses, and it doesn't surprise me that there are other data providers who have come under additional, similar pressure to essentially remove that as a consideration for responsible investing, to me, which makes it virtually useless. So I suggest that we do a hybrid approach, where we exclude those industry groups and then focus on particular companies that we've identified are chronic and gross human rights abusers that are subject to investment. And the example I used in my comments, and it's in the current portfolio, it's been there for a while now, is Caterpillar. And I won't go into the details of why that's, I'm sure everyone here understands why. But those are my, you know, so I have a question or a comment, you know, I mean, can we just do the industry groups, and then in the exclusion policy, have particular companies that we can review here publicly on a, either a quarterly or a yearly basis, to see whether or not, you know, they've addressed the human rights abuses that, you know, for Caterpillar in particular, is involved in, and then go forward that way, and then not use a data provider that's been compromised? And it doesn't sound like it's a good option other than them anyway, because the other one has probably been similarly lobbied. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Any online commenters?
I'd just like to thank the former, the last constituent and echo his sentiments. I was the person who spoke earlier. My name is Lucia, I am a member of a grassroots organization called Bay Area Divest. We were instrumental in getting Alameda County to divest $32 million from Caterpillar on account of their long history of human rights abuses in occupied Palestine. I'm also an Albany resident, and I'd like to oppose the recommendation of using Morningstar Sustain Analytics, because as recently as December of last year, so about three months ago, they actually watered down their ratings method to remove human rights as a meaningful consideration for risk. And I'm sure the staff is well aware of this, but I just want to reiterate, it's deeply disturbing to see this kind of development amongst ESG data providers like Morningstar, because thoughtful ESG research is actually needed to assess whether our investment portfolios live up to their commitment to respect human rights. And so saying that certain areas or factors are too complex to be properly researched is actually doing a disservice to both analysts and the concept of ESGs in general. It also undermines investors themselves, who should be able to come to their own conclusions when presented with that data. Additionally, the evidence for objective analysis of human rights risks is, or shouldn't be contested and difficult. If data providers remove themselves the way that Morningstar has, that does not remove the risk for investors, it actually increases it, because it increases the risk of uninformed and irresponsible investments that worsen human suffering and directly contradict values like the ones that the city of Albany holds so dearly. And I think it's important to note that we are entering into a very troubling moment in our country's history. Fascism is at our doorstep. This weekend, a green card holder in New York was kidnapped and disappeared under orders from the White House. We've watched our national parks being stripped of their funding, our educational institutions are being stripped of their funding and threatened by the federal government. And so this is really a moment for us all to step up in whatever capacities we have available to us. So I'm urging the city council to please adopt the first or the second option of divesting from companies in our own portfolios, such as Caterpillar, Lockheed Martin, or, as the previous constituent mentioned, finding some kind of a hybrid model. The people of Albany are capable and deserve this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, and I want to...
Do we have more public comments?
Sorry.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, everybody. I really appreciate you taking the time to look into this matter. I'm an Albany resident, you know, I work, I spend my, like, a large chunk of my money goes to taxes that fund the military, that fund defense. They already have our money, right? And so as, you know, people with morals, as people who want to align our money with our values, we don't need to make money off of these companies. I think it's pretty telling that, you know, when I look at what rating Lockheed Martin has, for example, from Sustainalytics, it's given medium, which doesn't, you know, it doesn't reflect accurately, like, the death and destruction that this company in particular causes, and that we all know causes, you know, they cause it. So, yeah, I agree, I think that, like, you know, if we're going with a company that is, you know, subject to lobbying from very powerful sources, like, you know, defense contractors or whatnot, yeah, it makes me a little bit more hesitant with their numbers. I recently had to decide, you know, in my own job, like, what investment portfolio to use. I did use a handy website called Weapons Free, what is it, Weapons Free Funds, WeaponsFreeFunds.org, and I felt like it gave a more accurate rating based on data that includes human rights abuses. Yeah, I thought it was alarming, too. I did a little bit of research on Sustainalytics and saw that rather than just provide their, you know, potential investors with the data so that we can make our own decisions, they just decided to not include the data. And like, that is really not a trustable, yeah, that, to me, doesn't sound like a trustable company for, like, my city. a trustable company for like my city. And once again, you know, I'm really proud to be an Albany resident. I'm proud to be an Alameda County resident. And yeah, I really thank you for putting so much thought and time into this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, this is Tamiko. I'm an Albany resident. Thank you to the committee and the staff and to the previous commenters. I don't need to repeat what they said. I agree with everything that's already been said and I just want to remind us all that Albany is a sanctuary city and it's not just, you know, something cute to put on our website. Like, you know, from the federal level, we are under attack and it's time to walk the walk and be a sanctuary and be somewhere that people can stay safe and can feel safe. And we can't do that if we're profiting off companies that are, you know, making money from, from war mongering, from prison labor, from human rights violations. So yeah, I just agree with everything that was said before. I really like the idea of excluding specific industries and then having the option on top of that to exclude particular companies. So thanks again to everybody.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you, everyone, for your public comments. I'll open it up for discussion.
Yes, as on Sustain Analytics, I'm, I'm kind of confused and curious because I provided the ability to download a summary of their methodology. And they said in Building Block Five, they have these different things that they consider. And in Building Block Five, one of the two pieces is idiosyncratic issues. And that, for example, a human rights scandal is atypical for many sub-industries like heavy machinery and trucks or electronics equipment. It is certainly not predictable and falls outside of the logic with which we capture sub-industry-specific material ESG issues. Idiosyncratic issues become material issues only for the specific company in question, not for the entire sub-industry. So I don't know if their December announcement means that they're no longer going to consider that example. And to me, the distinction is, from an investment perspective, there's risk to the way they framed this, which is a human rights scandal, which is different than there actually being a human rights violation. I mean, one could say a human rights scandal or a human rights concern. I know, for instance, in my, my training at UC, around conflict of interest, we're trained to avoid actual conflict of interest as well as the perception of conflict of interest. And so from an investment perspective, there is a risk to the perception of a human rights violation. And so I can't tell if Morningstar is saying, we're gonna, we're not going to validate whether human rights violations in contiguous territories, conflicts of contiguous territories are objectively valid, or are they going to consider whether there's a perception that there's a human rights violation anymore? Reason I raise this is because I am, I am interested, having gone through all the, all the companies in the portfolio, having some systematic analysis product that we would use rather than we ourselves going through one by one. Because one, what do I know? I'm not, you know, don't want to spend my time analyzing this and I wouldn't have the expertise to do it anyway. But there were a number of, of, not a large number, but there were a number of, of companies in our portfolio that are in the high-risk category. BP, not surprisingly, Wells Fargo, which one could surmise why that is, something called Akar Incorporated, which I looked that up and never heard of it before. It's a, it's a basically heavy transportation manufacturing company, so diesel trucks, things like that. I could guess why that's a high-risk category, but that would only be a guess. Something called World Omni Autotrust. And ever heard of that before? Have no idea. And so I'm worried that taking just the industry or company-specific approach, company-specific approach is going to be pretty burdensome for the two of us and might miss, you know, some of these things. So yeah, I'm, I'm kind of torn. Also on aerospace and defense, I mean, it's aerospace and defense and so there are companies that, that are all civilian aerospace, you know, with no defense, and we would be ruling them out as well. Now, I don't know if any of the aerospace and defense companies in the 300 that, that you as an asset manager have pre-vetted, I don't know if any of those are purely civilian aerospace or not, but certainly purely civilian aerospace companies exist. So I'm, I'm, I'm torn. I will note that, that the example they cited, which they didn't say, but I think it's pretty clearly, that example is drawn right from the news of Caterpillar. Caterpillar's a 28.3, so it was at the very upper end of medium risk. So it's A potential, and I'm not saying, not putting this on the table is what we would do, but, but just for brainstorming, A potential idea is to, it's just set our ESG risk threshold in a different position than 30 and set the environmental score threshold different or don't even have the environmental score threshold because that's incorporated into the ESG risk. And so we might be able to still hit some reasonable universe of what is still allowed while excluding companies like Caterpillar, companies like Lockheed Martin, which is 28.1. And I'll note Toyota Motor Corporation, which this is eye-opening for me, is a 28. And this, this, again, I don't know because I don't have access to, I presume when you, you have a subscription, you actually can look at like the whole sheet of, like, the whole analysis and all they give is for free, which I fully appreciate is, you know, one paragraph in the score. But I read the other day that, that, or somebody said the other day and correlates with what I see on the web, having looked, that Toyota has basically decided not to go for EVs. So it has no EV, EVs currently, which is kind of shocking, I would say, given other automotive companies. So that might be why they're at 28. I'm not saying it is. And they do apparently have some, their first EV in the works, but they're like way behind the curve. So in terms of financial, in terms of investment risk, they're at tremendous risk. I mean, California is going to stop allowing the sales of internal combustion vehicles in 2035 and they're, they're like way behind the curve.
They bet heavy on hydrogen and the continuation of their hybrid systems.
Exactly. But I mean, the hybrid system.
No, I, I.
Yeah.
They are behind.
So I guess my point is, having gone through this, I see, oh, there's like other things here to consider than just picking like specific, you know, because neither, Toyota's not neither of, if we go with the industry approach, you know, if we go with the business approach, then yes, but then we've got to analyze like World Omni Autotrust, which is a 31.3 and it's 2.7% of our portfolio. I mean, it's way more than, than these other companies we're talking about.
Yeah, I truly appreciate everything that you've presented today. I appreciate the nuances of the industry versus sub-industry, the ESG and the environmental score. And I'm going to set aside the, I know we have a lot of commenters on the human rights side, but I want to set that aside for a second because what I appreciate about what you presented today is I think it encapsulates a large portion of what we as council have asked for, which is how do we make sure that what we're invested in is in line with what we as a community stand for? And so whether it's an industry-specific or it's an ESG rating, wherever we set that number, it is getting us way, way, we are going to be in a much better position than we were in the past. And I'm disappointed that Morningstar is removing human violations as a potential part of their score and that there appear to be no other major industry standards that put that incorporated. Because in any other system, that puts the weight on us as a council or asking you as our advisors to do the research on that scale.
And if I could just add one thing, and this comes not to stealth under or take care of for things that I certainly didn't dream up, but one of Justin's colleagues, Sarah, has been working with us on this. She's kind of the ESG guru at PFAM and is a complete rock star, so I have to say that out loud. But the, the piece that Sustain Analytics has changed is only one component of a number of criteria that address issues around human rights. Okay? So it's one little slice. It is a, one that is very top of mind, Israel-Palestine conflict. I mean, it's, it's right there. It's very emotional for people and it is a, a very current situation. But the ESG ratings do still take into account, broadly speaking, a number of human rights areas, including, you know, sanctions, weapons, other human rights actions or inactions. And so it, it is a, a very nuanced area and, and going forward with something like a Sustain Analytics or MSCI, which is the other major company which has faced a similar conundrum, is not to say, oh, well, if we went with Sustain Analytics, we wouldn't be looking at human rights issues at all. Boom, done. That's not the case. That would still be incorporated in it, but this area of, and you said it, Councilmember Jordan, this sort of contiguous land conflict, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that, that we keep that in mind as well, is that it's not a wholesale disregard of anything related to human rights or human rights, potential human rights violations, but it is a very specific piece that they have chosen to pull out right now. Whether that makes it more or less comfortable to consider an industry or sub-industry strategy is, I think, the, the real kind of maybe a lot of the meat of this discussion. And, and the last thing I would say on this is also to echo what Councilmember Jordan said, if you go on a company-by-company basis, I worry that between the committee and the staff and, and even PFAM, that's a very granular level if it's going to be something that we continue to try to hone in on company, 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 company. Now, if there are specific pieces that we want to take a look at, fine, but to have just a company strategy for pulling things potentially out of authorized investments for the city of Albany may turn out to be administratively burdensome in a way that is not valuable. And there are other ways to reach that, as Justin went through the slides, in terms of industry, sub-industry, revenue, ownership, there, there are a lot of ways to put that together.
Yeah, so I, if we set the threshold at a 27 of ESG risk, for instance, that would screen out Lockheed Martin and Caterpillar. But I now don't know, is, is Caterpillar at a 28.3? Is it going to be like a 25 next time it's scored because they've, they've made this adjustment to their methodology? Because we're in this transition, it's hard for me to.
So.
Yeah.
I mean, I had another finance director, thank you for your comments. I truly appreciate them and I think one of my biggest concerns has been the subcommittee, council, subconsultant, US Finance Director, having to go through and figure out which companies should we be divesting from. And so having ESG standard, having an industry standard, like something that we can point to and say, this is, we're just not investing in that sector or, and so again, thank you for clarifying that they are taking human rights violations into account, they're just not necessarily taking them into account the way that some of the members of public have expressed concerns about. Another way to approach this would be knowing what our goals are as a council in terms of sustainability, long-term thinking about the environment. The construction industry in general is not a very sustainable industry. And so were we to look at it as aerospace, oil and gas, energy services and construction industries, essentially the producers, the manufacturers of the devices? We are looking at it in a broad category. We are looking at it from an ESG standpoint in that like these companies are producing things, generally speaking, the construction industry, you know, our carbon impact is mostly how, the building, the buildings we live in and the transportation that we do. And investing in construction companies or the industry that produces machines isn't going to help us solve our problems. I mean, we are not going to build our way out of the problems that we have, I guess is what I'm saying. So that's another way of approaching this, whereas like if we look at that as an industry that we would like, prefer not to invest in, then we can stick with an ESG of zero to 30, whatever that number is, and I would say environmental score of zero to 10. I'm just throwing that out for consideration. I guess in any ways, we're sending a recommendation or things to consider to the entire council. But an approach that would fundamentally solve this would be to approach it that way in that it's actually another industry that we would like to remove from the list of investments. Because the reality is while Caterpillar has been identified as, and I will say, thank you to the public who has provided me information about what Caterpillar is doing, I did not understand that the particular bulldozer where you're talking about is specifically meant for use in war zones. So just starting there. But we are talking about Caterpillar today. Who's to say that, I'm going to make up something, Hyundai Construction opens up a subsidiary in the United States and they start building Caterpillar's, sorry, bulldozers or other devices that are also intended for that situation? Again, that business would then be classified under the construction side. Like, I think there is a way to approach this from a category as opposed to a specific business that long-term helps us both hit our goals and avoid having to constantly be checking, are these companies violating?
Yeah, so through the Sustain Analytics site, it was able to look at different sectors and kind of like I brought up with aerospace and defense, I'm not that keen on just ruling out whole sectors, so even, even oil and gas. So there are oil and gas companies. I don't know if they're one of the 300 op. When I looked at the whole sector, there's oil and gas companies that have much lower ESG risk. And when I go look at those companies' website, again, I don't see the full sheet, so I don't know why they had that rating, but when I look at their, use that and look at their site, those, that correlates with oil and gas production companies that are actually taking the transition seriously. So like Petroboss, which is a Spanish oil and gas company, they are a major grid-scale solar company as well. They have like eight gigawatts of production capacity. And so I don't necessarily want to just penalize all oil and gas companies. I want to use our money to also provide some pressure to the industry, like if you're not taking the transition seriously, then yeah, you're, we're not going to, we're not going to buy your paper. But if you are, as evident from your risk score, then, then you're in bounds. Because otherwise, you're just like ruling out all these companies and, and even, you know, like construction companies. I mean, we need construction. I wouldn't be comfortable just ruling out all construction equipment because I live in a house, people live in buildings, and I just, I just think that companies that are trying to responsibly move in a direction of more sustainably producing what we need should, we should invest in them. And so maybe in that regard, and so I, so I appreciate we're having this, this debate, this discussion because we've got these two different approaches and maybe a way forward would be to, to, you know, each of us get, get some more data and do more, some more analysis and maybe what we need is, is more data on the 300 that are allowed. And, you know, for my part, I guess if I could get the spreadsheet that's behind the scatter, scatter plot, so I could see the scores for different companies and play around with, okay, if we put the threshold at 27 on the ESG risk and we have no threshold on the environmental score, or just, you know, if I could play around with it more, then I could come up with a more potentially cogent proposal to bring back, or at least thought experiment to bring back.
So for instance, as you're saying, I mean, if we just go back to aerospace side, it could be that there are aerospace companies, the, the orange dots here, and that one of them falls within, two of them look really close. It could be that the one that falls within actually is not providing defense and it's truly just civilian, so it could be, sorry? I watch a lot of YouTube videos about airplanes.
Yeah.
Totally blanking on Cessna. I don't know who actually owns Cessna, but, you know, assuming the Cessna was purely.
Civilian.
Civilian.
Wow.
And that they actually happen to be one of the 300, which is another factor. Because that would lean us, I guess a, a hybrid could be that we followed in the way that you were saying, we use each ESG as the primary factor. However, there's, we could also say within the aerospace and defense, we would not invest in anyone who actually does non-civilian aerospace. Right? So there, what, I guess we could do a combination. And I'm hoping that that doesn't actually change the basis points that we're paying for that level of analysis.
Well, yeah, what I don't know though is, is, is there any ready, off-the-shelf, I would guess probably there is, for aerospace and defense?
That breaks it further down.
Because we don't want to do that. I mean, I don't want to go into their annual reports and figure that out. If I could even could. I mean, there might even be transparent about that, you know, might be impossible to figure out.
Yes. I was running with your idea.
Yeah.
And now, now we've hit a roadblock.
Well, we have. I don't know. I mean, is there, is there, to use that example, is there a product that sort of says, okay, between aerospace and defense, this company is, you know, 80% civilian aerospace and 20% defense? Does that exist or just ask, not presume?
That's something I could dig into. I don't have the answer this time.
Fair.
I guess what I would say is I would agree with Councilmember Jordan's point that having the list of the 300 and their score, even if it's in a really basic Excel spreadsheet, would be useful to understand, like, who is that aerospace defense company that's barely there? Or what is that number more precisely? I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation to move this forward to council today. I am super appreciative of the data that you have provided. I do think having a little bit more data on kind of the scatter graph and the numbers behind it would be beneficial, the companies and, and the, the numbers behind it. Because we might be, we might be describing things that don't exist, like Cessna. Like there may be no aerospace companies on the list that at a glance are even reasonably just doing civilian, right? And so I think having that list of 300 of who we're allowed to invest in would be extremely beneficial.
Yeah, and then I, and this may be a step too far depending on what your license agreement is with Morningstar Sustainalytics, but if, if we could have, well, we can certainly ask and you can say no, but there might, there might be like asking for the, the full analysis for companies that are kind of on the cusp one way or the other. And having a few example, like full sheets or whatever the product is you get, I don't know if it's a PDF or, or if it's in a system that, you know, you have to log into, in which case it wouldn't be available, but having the whole analysis for a few companies that are like just above or below various possible thresholds, I think would help me understand more how like what's available to a layperson in the public domain correlates and goes into the analysis they do, just to get a little more insight into what they're doing. But again, I don't know if your license would allow you to provide us, you know, say three of those or something, 300.
I'm not sure either, but that's something I'll look into.
Yep, sure.
And I, I think certainly we can come back with a couple of these questions that you have asked of us and potentially some additional data after we speak with Justin and Sarah. And there is room in the upcoming anticipated topics for the Audit and Fiscal Sustainability Council Standing Committee, long-aimed, to bring that back. So, you know, there, there's no external pressure to, unlike the budget, where there will be external pressure. So just to remind people of that. But there isn't any external pressure. So we can certainly come back and, and, you know, bring those back and, and continue that conversation. And that may be the, the best path forward for us is really to, you know, kind of take everything in that we heard today and come back with some additional kind of policy pieces and maybe some refinement to some of the options that we have.
Great, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you so much, Justin, for your presentation.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Justin, for all your time. I appreciate that. And I'm taking that as committee direction to come back to the committee with an item on this topic again with further information and options or strategies.
And I think if we, if we can, if it's allowed, if we give you provided the score, you know, the list of 300 and their, their scores, maybe if the ESG risk rating is the sum of an E-score, an S-score, and a G-score, then having that breakdown as well would be helpful if it's allowed, again. Yeah, I love to play around with numbers, so.
Not typically. That is not, not the way the, that this works unfortunately. You can glare at us and, and you are always welcome to send us an email follow-up.
And reach out to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy to talk.
You really, you, you, Peter.
Not currently, but if you email City Clerk, we'll make sure that it's forwarded timely. Yes.
That's a little bit outside of our normal processes and procedures, but the public comment, just for those who may have been listening in from home, was a question of there was a specific email address for the AFS. I'm just going to call it the AFS, the Audit and Fiscal, yes. And the answer was no, but if you email the City Clerk and specify that you'd like it to come to this standing committee, it will be forwarded on to us.
I can confirm that I received emails. I obviously can't confirm if I received all of them because I don't know, but I received them and it was useful information and I did read it and I did click on links, so thank you very much.
All right. So with that, we'll close item five dash one. We'll move on to item six announcements. Staff, any announcements?
I just wanted to provide a high-level overview of what I just alluded to, which is that we, while we have a robust set of topics, there is room for a little bit of maneuvering. In April, we will likely bring back some additional information on ESG investing, but we will also be talking about pension funding policies and strategies potentially to do that through certain kinds of trusts that could be set up, so we'll be bringing that back. May is the big budget month, so we'll be doing our big budget workshop with the committee in May. And then June, likely, we will come with our third quarter FY '25, we're a little bit off because we need to spend May on, on the upcoming budget. And then beyond that, we have future budget reports, potential revenue measures. We have a variety of things that will come over the course of the rest of the year. But those are a high-level picture of where we're headed over the next several months.
All right, thank you so much. Any announcements, Councilmember Jordan?
Me, just thanks for the overview.
All right. Do we take public comment on announcements? And then there's no future agenda item opportunity? Okay, perfect. So with that, we'll adjourn to today's meeting. Thank you so much.
Take your chair.
Thank you.